Good evening, everyone. The Paramount City Council is now called to order. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Women's Club and the invocation by Pastor Larry Jameson from the Lifegate Four Square Church. Ladies?
Please stand, put your hands over your heart, and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I may make a quick statement, and that is, the State of the City address was wonderful. Thank you for sharing all those things with us. We learned a lot, and we have a bright future ahead of us. Also, thank you, Madam Mayor, for visiting with us at our church and showing up and being there for worship. We really appreciate that. Our people were really blessed by you being there. So, thank you. Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have given to us. And even though we've had more rain than we normally expect, Lord, may it just show us that you want to rain blessing down upon us. You want to rain your goodwill upon this city of Paramount. You want to touch the people's hearts. You want to soften us up. You want to keep us encouraged. You want to bless us in so many ways. You've given us a wonderful city in which to live and serve and work in, and we're asking, God, that you would just continually do great things among us. We thank you for this wonderful city council that you've given, to discuss things together, to reason together, and to make decisions that would be for the benefit of all the people of Paramount. So, we're asking, again, your blessing upon them, keeping them well and safe. We know sickness has been going around. We know Peggy Lemmons has been going through some things herself and getting better. And so many people have been sick. We ask that you would sweep through our schools and bring healing to our children that are there, and to keep our teachers well and safe as well. We're asking, God, for your guidance upon all of our business community. We thank you for those that you have placed within us that keep things going as far as allowing jobs to be formed and seeing good things happen within our homes financially because of the job situation here in Paramount. And we're asking you to continually bless all of those who lead businesses. We're thanking you for everything that you do here in this city, and we're asking you to continually pour out your grace upon us all, keep us all living better lives, serving each other well, preferring others above ourselves. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Larry. At this time, we will have a roll call of council members, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. At this time, we'll have presentations. My colleagues, please join me at the podium.
Tonight, we are here again recognizing some special members of our Paramount community. First up, I want to thank the Paramount Women's Club for being here and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. But first, with the parents of Major Richard Ramos, please come forward. Tonight, we are retiring another one of our Boulevard of Heroes banners. These banners hang along Paramount Boulevard to honor the brave women and men of our town who are serving in the military. When an individual leaves the service, we provide the actual banner and a smaller version to them or their families. We also present a challenge coin that signifies their connection to Paramount and how they have represented the city. This evening's honoree is Major Ramos of the United States Army, who cannot be present this evening, but we are very pleased to have Mr. and Mrs. Ramos here to accept mementos. And we thank the major for his service to our country and for doing Paramount proud. Mr. and Mrs. Ramos. Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Ramos. May I thank you for your son's service and God bless you. Would you like to say a few words on behalf of your son?
It is with immense gratitude to the city of Paramount that you're doing this. It is special for us. We couldn't be at Richard's retirement ceremony because he was in Germany. He is in Virginia now, and that's why he can't be here, but it's thrilled to know that you're doing this. And so, thank you so much. Also, as we're so happy to be here with you today, I can't not think about those members of the military and their families that did not make it home and that came injured or were killed. So, I prayed and asked you to pray for them and thank them for their services as well.
We will. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you.
We'll take a quick photo.
This lets us pay our respect to the many contributions that women have made to our country throughout the history. This is also a time to celebrate the Paramount Women's Club, which has promoted education, health, and civic involvement since 1926. The Women's Club volunteers at the library help families and children during the holidays, offer scholarships to local students, and is active in many other ways. They have a vital part of our community for 93 years. It is my pleasure to give the city's proclamation to the Paramount Women's Club. Ladies, please come forward.
You're the president, Alyssa.
Dave, you want to have him come up on the scale?
This is our president, the Paramount Women's Club, Alyssa.
Diane, can we come up here so we got a larger group?
Okay, that's fine.
Council up on the top row there. Tell me if you're happy. There we go. On two, one and two. And one more, please. One and two. Thank you. Ken gives me three.
Would Deputy Hector Sane and Deputy Jason Colon please come forward? And also, we have Acting Captain present this evening, Dave Sprinkle. Please come join us as well, Captain. On February 17th, Deputies Sane and Colon were dispatched to recall of an apartment fire at the senior housing complex on Vermont Avenue. They arrived on the scene before the fire department and found that a balcony was on fire. They immediately started evacuations. The deputies entered the burning, smoke-filled apartment and found an elderly female and an elderly male, who they quickly took to safety. The man and the woman escaped the fire with no injuries. This act of heroism and bravery of the part of deputies Sane and Deputy Colon rushing into a burning building showed great courage and valor. Tonight, we commend them for these remarkable actions.
Thank you. Deputy Colon. And deputies Sane, thank you so much. Okay, let's take a photo up here. Captain?
Thank you to the city of Paramount, to the residents, council members. It's an honor to receive this, but I was just doing my job. So, you know, my partner and I, we didn't think twice. We looked at each other and we said, "We gotta go," and that's what we did. So, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our presentations. Okay, are there any city council public comments, Mr. Moreno?
We do have one public comment card, Madam Mayor, and no public comment updates. So, the first and only comment card is from Andrea Crowe, our librarian, and she wants to come up and tell the council about some library programs. Andrea?
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, council members in the city of Paramount. In celebration of Teen Tech Month, which is when libraries showcase their digital resources and services, teens are invited to play Technology Bingo tomorrow, Wednesday, March 6th, at 4:00 p.m. This Saturday, March 9th, at 2:00 p.m., children ages 5 to 12 are invited to listen to the Sunshine Storyteller as she takes us on an adventure using movement, songs, poetry, and international tales. And MCMO is coming. On Thursday, March 14th, at 4:00 p.m., children ages 7 to 12 are invited to become hydraulics engineers. Participants will explore concepts like force, motion, distance, and gravity by building cool machines. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Consent calendar, please.
Move it.
No objections.
So ordered. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 10, receive and file. May I have an update on the residential air purifier filtration and HVAC filter rebate program, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor and council. Last year, you may recall, the city council approved funding for a program that provides cash rebates to residents who purchase in-home air purifiers and HVAC filters. The same rules that we previously established for the really successful home security rebate program also apply to this program. However, we haven't seen the same level of success with this program as we have seen with the home security program. So, after the presentation, please feel free to provide us any ideas or suggestions that you may have for improving this program. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Shahn, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Just as an overview of the air purifier filtration and HVAC filter rebate program, it was approved by the city council in July of last year. The program offers a $100 rebate for the purchase of air purifier units or $50 for home HVAC The program is intended to help improve air quality in Paramount homes due to regional air quality issues from mobile sources such as truck emissions, mostly from the ports. The city council approved an allocation of $10,000 for this program in the current fiscal General guidelines for the program include you must be a Paramount resident, the rebate is available one time per household, a receipt must be submitted with an application within 60 days of the purchase date of the air filter or HVAC filter, and rebates will be provided to residents until the funding is exhausted. And these are a couple examples of home air purifier units. Another requirement of the program is that air purifier units must have HEPA filtration. And these are just some pictures showing filters that are eligible through this program for home HVAC systems. And since the program started last year, staff has processed rebates for 47 applicants, totaling just over $4,300, leaving more than $5,600 available for additional rebates. Of course, staff wants the community to take advantage of the rebates, and we are continuing to get the message out about the program via the city's websites, through social media, and informational handouts. And also, as John mentioned, we'll gauge the demand for this program and come back to you if additional funding is needed. However, so far, this program hasn't quite gained the traction or the same traction in the community as compared with the home security program, rebate program that's been very popular and has merited additional funding. So, with that, that concludes my update on this program, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Kevin?
Please, Stephen File. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 11, Cerritos College Complete Program. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We were recently contacted by Cerritos College requesting that they give an overall presentation about the college and about a new program that they are promoting. It's called the Cerritos Complete Program. So, with us here tonight is Ms. Maya Walker. She's the Director of Public Affairs and Governmental Relations of Cerritos College. Ms. Walker?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, the council, esteemed guests. Again, my name is Maya Walker, Director of Public Relations, Public Affairs and Governmental Relations for Cerritos College. It is my honor to join you again. You'll recall, I think it was about two years ago when I was here before this body, in gratitude for the service that you have, the college-bound bus which transports your residents and students from the city of Paramount to our campus, which we are very grateful for. Affordable transportation is a huge issue for our students, and so, again, we'd like to thank you for your partnership with that. So, I will give you a brief, thank you so much, brief overview of a very exciting program that we have bolstered, actually, our promise program, which is what we're calling Cerritos Complete. But before I get to that, I wanted to take you through a little bit of what we're doing on campus to support students and to support our community. So, Cerritos College is here, has been in existence since 1955. We have been a very strong partner in the community and across our region. And this representation here is basically a puzzle piece of all of the ways that we are put together in order to support our students through community partnerships, community investment, our constructions efforts to transform our campus into a more modern facility and a better learning environment for our students. Student-wise, we have a very high number of underrepresented students. As you can see, 96% of our students come from underserved or racially/ethnic background, and 55%, almost 60 at this point, are first-generation college students. It's a huge number. So, that puts the onus on us really to provide quality, high-level support services that deal with some of the issues that our students oftentimes face as first generation. Here's our student profile, where our students are largely coming from. As you can see, we have a nice portion that do come from Paramount Unified. Some of the goals that our students come to our campus for is to transfer. Also, as you can see, a large number of them come for what we call our career technical education. We have some award-winning programs on campus, like our culinary arts program, dental hygiene, our child development, welding, plastics. A number of these programs, automotive, a number of these programs are graduating students at a very high rate into careers that are high in demand as well as high-earning. Part of our student services is also to address some of the issues that we've seen on our campus with food insecurity. This is an issue that is statewide, and some of the ways that Cerritos College is supporting our students on campus who have identified themselves as food insecure is we provide a pantry on our campus, as well as we partner with the L.A. Regional Food Bank twice a month. Diversity and inclusion is a huge point for our campus. Our president and the Board of Trustees has been very intentional about broadening our scope of diversity and inclusion. We are a safe campus where everyone is included, everyone is invited to feel welcome regardless of their status, regardless of immigration status, regardless of religion, race, or creed. And in that same spirit, we at Cerritos College have created or are creating what we are calling a culture of respect. And that is a respect and a welcoming of all cultures. Some of our programs include our Safe Zone, which deals with and supports our LGBT community. We have a strong Latinx awareness program on our campus, as you know, or maybe some of you don't know, we are an HSI, which is Hispanic Serving Institute. More than 70% of our students identify as Latino. We also have a strong culture that supports our veterans. Some years ago, we were established as a military-friendly school, which we actually still have that designation. Next month, in the month of April, we will be celebrating again our Festival of Asian Cultures, which celebrates the contributions and attributes of our Asian-American population on our campus and in our community. We also just finished celebrating Black History Month, focused on some of the contributions of those individuals on our campus and throughout the country. We are also now into Women's History Month, as you all have declared today. We have a very robust schedule of events happening to celebrate women and all of the wonderful contributions that women have made globally. This next image is for our Dreamers and our AB540 students. This represents our support for our undocumented students. So, with that, I want to transition over to some of the top things that we offer at Cerritos College in the form of our AA degrees. These are our top 10 AA degrees that students come to us and earn. As you can see from the list, they're pretty varied, and again, they represent high-income careers and jobs, which is pretty important for our students in the region as they grow into their professions and leave our campus and contribute to your cities more tax dollars when they're working. These are our top 10 certificate programs. We're very proud of the work that we do in preparing our students for the workforce, and these are just some of the programs that have ranked in the top 10. Again, associate's degrees for transfer. Now, what that means is we are a part of the chancellor's offices' direction to ensure that students are transferring in a timely manner, in a more guided pathway. So, some of these, what you have on the screen here are what we call ADTs, which is Associate Degree for Transfer. So, this requires us to partner with local Cal states, and these are some of the programs that our students have a guaranteed access to when they transfer to any CSU in the state. CSU being California State Universities. We are excited about our very high graduation rate. We have, as you can see, since 2015, we have been experiencing a boom in graduation rates, and this is attributed to some of the very strong support services that we provide our students and the commitment of our Board of Trustees to provide additional resources and our faculty and staff who work tirelessly to make sure that our students have everything that they need to be successful. So, now, I want to talk a little bit about Cerritos Complete. Cerritos Complete is our promise program, and it's more than a promise. Most traditional promise programs really focus on the idea of access. Our program focuses on access and completion, and it's not just about the ability to come to college free. As Dr. Fierro says, this program really is about providing an investment to students who are willing to work in order to get their tuition paid. There are a number of steps that our students are required to take so that they have a stake in their own investment in higher education. They come to us, and we wrap around incredible support services, one-on-one counseling, personalized financial aid. We also have priority registration for these students. We are also finding that these students are outperforming some students who don't have this particular opportunity because they have such extensive support services. So, it's something that we're really excited about. We hope you had an opportunity to see the coverage on the news locally. We've gotten a lot of good attention and a lot of interest from the region and parents. Our parent nights are actually sort of all the rage right now, standing room only, with parents coming into our local high schools to hear more about Cerritos Complete. And there's more information. I have flyers placed in the back if you'd like, and we also have more information on our website, which is ceritos.edu. So, just to give you a little bit about how well the program is doing, we were recently awarded the 2018 Examples of Excellence Award for Accelerating Latino Student Success. This is a national program award that identifies campuses that promote the success of Latino students, and we have been selected, and we are very proud of that. We also have been identified as one of 10 national finalists for a very prestigious award called the Bellwether. This award recognizes, you know, institutions that have innovative programs, innovative programs that are looking to advance student success. Some other accomplishments that we're very proud of is the very, our art gallery on campus. I don't know how many people have had an opportunity to visit our renovated art gallery, but it was named one of 15 of the best art galleries in Southern California by L.A. Weekly. It's a huge honor. Anyone who knows L.A. Weekly knows that they're very sort of avant-garde in their editorial. And this is a huge honor for us and our students who work very hard to populate the art pieces in that gallery. We are also very proud of our dental hygiene and registered nurses. We are consistently graduating nursing students with 100% NCLEX exam, and that's pretty huge. We want to also share with you some of our community partners, which also includes Paramount and Unified. Without our community partners, we would not be successful in integrating our students into more success programs, and the way that we've done that is to be able to outreach and partner with a number of local K-12s. Again, aside from the educational partners, we also have economic development partners. As you can see, the list is pretty bountiful, and we are working every day to identify new partners in order to bring more services to our students and our community. Again, another look at our community partnerships. So, one of the things that we wanted to draw to your attention is the impact that Cerritos College graduates have on the region. Our graduates earn an average of $58,000 by their mid-career, and what that means is when they come back into your cities, when they come back into the region, they are adding economic value to this whole region. There was a recent survey that came out, and it said that nearly 60% of Cerritos College alumni think that their work is meaningful. That's huge. their work is meaningful. That's huge. When it talks about purpose, we know that many people are abandoning jobs when they don't feel that the work that they do is purposeful. Our student graduates feel like they are contributing to making the world a better place, and that's a huge, it's a huge thing. We wanted to also transition on to the way that Cerritos College is using the tax dollars that we were entrusted with by voters in, for two bond programs that we have. Currently, we are going to be unveiling our Health and Wellness Center very soon. This is a project that has been LEED certified or have gone through the green building process. It's a beautiful facility. We hope that one day that you will come on campus and take a tour. We're also in the process, tomorrow actually, of breaking ground on our new Performing Arts Center. It is going to be an extraordinary building, 70,000 square feet of space for creativity, for innovation. And this is something, again, that has been paid for through the bond dollars. A recent independent audit showed that Cerritos College Bond Program actually has no findings, meaning that we have been truthful and transparent and responsible with the dollars that we've been provided. This is a consistent high mark for us. We've consistently ranked high on our independent reports on our bond program. Just some of the recently completed construction projects, the Fine Arts Complex, Math and Science, and our Child Development Center. So I know I probably spoke a little too fast, but if there's any questions I can take from the council or Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do so. If not, again, thank you for allowing us to come and give you a brief update, and hopefully we will come back with more news from Cerritos. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I'm so proud of Cerritos College. You have so much to offer for the community. It makes me want to go back to college.
Yes, ma'am.
You may see me in the summer. I will be attending Wednesday at 4:30 the groundbreaking and be representing our city.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you. Okay, item number 12, Award of Contract Neighborhood Street Resurfacing. May I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Our latest resurfacing project is upon us. It includes a number of residential streets, mostly in the west end of town. And as you know, this is, this is by far one of the most important duties that a municipality does, and that's to keep our, our streets paved nicely. So we're very grateful to receive the extra gas tax money that was approved by the voters last year. This allows us actually to prove, to pave more streets than we, what we would normally do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Adriana Figueroa, our Public Works Director, who will handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you, as indicated by John, is the Award of Contract for the Next Phase of Our Neighborhood Street Resurfacing Project. We caught a couple of corrections, and so we have a revised version for you on your desk, so you can use that. The next slide. Bits for this project were opened and examined on February 25th with the apparent low bid submitted by All American Asphalt in the amount of $1,737,700. This is above the budgeted construction amount for this project of $1,005,000. Given that the project will carry over into the next fiscal year, the difference in costs will be funded from unobligated SB1 and Measure M funds from the Fiscal Year 20 Budget. Will be, as, as John indicated, will be concentrated in the Sands area north of Somerset, south of Rosecrans, and primarily west of Orange, with some areas going into San Marino to the east. On the upper right-hand corner, you can see the area south of the 105 freeway. This would be on Golden and Grant near Downey Avenue and Somerset Ranch Road South. On the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that we'll also be resurfacing areas south of Alondra and west of Orange on Motts, Marcel, and Ann Smith. Additionally, we have some areas that will be slurry, and these are San Marino and San Luis, north of Somerset Boulevard, as well as San Mateo, San Marcos, and San Luis from San Marino to the back of Salute Park. South of Somerset Boulevard, we have the areas indicated east and west of Orange, and of course, north of Alondra. It is recommended that the City Council approve the plans and specs, award the contract for construction of the Neighborhood Street Resurfacing improvements to All American Asphalt in the amount of $1,737,700, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Adriana?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 13, Award of Contract. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Another thing that we obviously do is provide facilities that are safe and comfortable and clean. So with that, we have a project before you to replace the air-conditioning system at the community center, and Adriana will go over that. Adriana Figueroa?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you is an Award of Contract for the HVAC replacement at the Paramount Park Community Center. And as you may know, the community center serves as our designated cooling center during the hot summer months. Bits were opened on February 8th with the apparent low bid submitted by KLM Inc. in the amount of $102,400, which is below the budgeted amount of $105,000. These air conditioning units have been failing and are now at the end of their life expectancy. The project is expected to be completed within a month and will not impact the use of the facility. It is recommended that the City Council approve the plans and specs, award the contract for the HVAC replacement at the Paramount Park Community Center to KLM Inc. in the amount of $102,400, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. This concludes my report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Adriana?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 14, Resolution Number 19005. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, ma'am. As you know, our refuse contract with our certified holler, Calmet, it allows Calmet to, the opportunity to request a rate increase each year. So after negotiating with Calmet on their request, we're bringing to you a recommendation on the rates for this upcoming year. So here's Kevin to tell you about this. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Before I get started, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, you should have a revised report on the dais. There was a typographical error in the first paragraph for the 2008 year. The commercial rate increase was 5%, and the residential rate was 3%. So those two numbers were swapped inadvertently. So you have, you have the corrected version now. Well, it's hard to believe. It's been a year since we brought this matter for your review. But as John mentioned, in the city's contract with Calmet, there is a provision for an annual rate increase for both residential and commercial customers. This rate increase is negotiated each year by the city and with Calmet representatives before the new rate takes effect in April of each year. The city and Calmet recently concluded negotiations, and staff is recommending a rate increase for your consideration tonight. So for some background and to refresh your memory regarding residential accounts, in 2016, a 2% or 34 cent increase was approved. In 2017, a 4.8% or 83 cent increase was approved. And in 2018, 3% and a 54 cent increase was approved by the City Council. Typically, these monthly rate increases are based on higher operational costs incurred by Calmet and based on the Consumer Price Index or CPI increases. Also, another significant factor the city takes into consideration is the cost of services as compared with other neighboring cities. Maintaining a competitive trash rate for our, for our residents has always been one of, if not the, most important factor for city staff during negotiations with Calmet. And for some recent history on commercial rates, in 2016, a 3% increase was negotiated. In 2017, 2%. And in 2018, a 5% increase was approved by the City Council. And just so that you know, these increases are across the board for 1, 2, and 3 time pickups per week. And again, these are largely based on increases in operational costs, tipping fees, and the CPI. So for this year, 2019, Calmet originally came to the city with a proposal to increase, with increases of 16.4% and 4.62% for residential and commercial customers respectively. However, after negotiations, the city and Calmet agreed to increases of 1.7% for residential accounts and 5% for commercial accounts. For residential accounts, the negotiated 1.7% hike will result in a 32 cent increase per month. On a monthly basis, residential, the residential rate will increase from $18.66 to $18.98. And as you can see from this table, even with the 1.7% increase, Paramount's rate for residential customers stays very competitive and amongst the lowest rates when compared with area cities. One note, however, of this list, only Downey and Norwalk have negotiated their 2019 rates. All the other rates are for 2018. But our expectation is that the rates for all of these cities will increase following their 2019 negotiations. With commercial accounts, the 5% increase will result in a $6.30, I'm sorry, $6.36 increase for customers with a three-yard bin with one weekly scheduled pickup. And for those with twice per week, the rate increases by $10.60. And for customers with three pickups per week, the rate will go up by $14.72 per month. As with residential accounts, the new commercial rates will go into effect again on April 1st. And again, for comparison purposes, this chart shows the commercial rates for Paramount and our neighboring cities for customers with one weekly pickup. With this commercial increase, our rate would continue to be one of the lowest in the area and would be the lowest of the Calmet contracted cities. And with this chart, this is a comparison for two weekly pickups. And this is for three weekly pickups. And as I mentioned earlier, these are the 2018 rates for all cities except for Norwalk and Downey. Those rates, the rates for Norwalk and Downey are the 2019 rates. And finally, in consideration of the recommended rate increases that I, that I just went over, staff also negotiated, and Calmet has agreed to participate in one additional clutter-free Paramount event. As you know, our second annual event was held this past January and was widely successful, with almost double the number of Paramount residents using the event to dispose of their bulky items. Residents were surveyed at the January event, and a large number of the respondents said that they would appreciate another clutter-free Paramount event during the year. So that's what we did. We were able to negotiate that. And with your approval tonight, staff will schedule a second clutter-free event over the next couple of months. And as what's shown on the slide, Calmet has agreed to provide the bins and pay for the cost for disposing the bulky items. So to summarize, while 2000, the 2019 annual negotiations with Calmet resulted in a rate increase for both residential and commercial customers, the new rates remain relatively low and highly competitive in comparison with other cities across southeast L.A. County. So with that, we ask your approval of this item, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Bill Kalpikoff, the general manager from Calmet, is also in the audience and can also be available to answer questions as needed.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions?
I have a question. I, I'm not understanding how you say that we are one of the lowest when we're just about 2 cents below $19. And I look at other cities like Norwalk, who's bigger than us, who negotiated their contract last year and got a much better price than what they had been dealing with year after year at $1675. So Norwalk is at $1675, and then when you talk about Downey and Lakewood, the size of their city is larger and their household median income is higher than that of Paramount. So I feel like Paramount's kind of on the high side when, so my question to you is, what do you, how are you coming to your comparables? Is it by size? Is it by population? I look at Santa Fe Springs, which has about a 17,000 to 19,000 population, so I can almost understand why theirs would be a little bit more, just based on having to provide a service for a small city like that. But I'm not really understanding how we're getting the comparison. And then I'm curious, because last year, we did a 3% raise, and then this year, it's a 1.7. That's more than, when you combine the two, that's more than any COLA raise, cost of living increase. And then my, so that would be my question, our comparisons. And then, when was the last time we ever put this out for bid from another contractor? Because it just seems to me, if they came in requesting 16.4%, I can believe that there's going to be another increase next year. And I just think, for fairness, for transparency, we should put it out to bid next year. What are your thoughts?
Well, as to, I think your first question, specifically when we, when we compare ourselves against Norwalk, it is true, they, they did just go through a process, and their rate is very competitive for residential. But as compared with their, their commercial side, excuse me, I think that's where they were able to make up a large part of the difference. If you look at their commercial rate, they are significantly higher than, than our commercial rate, and which I think where, is where refuse companies make up, you know, the difference a lot of times with their contracts. So in the, in the case of Norwalk, for their commercial rate, it's, it looks like it's more than 70%, $70 more than, than what we charge. So that's, that's one reason.
Right, but that's a business, and I'm looking out for the, you know, the average person who has a average income as opposed to a business. So maybe the businesses shouldn't be picking up more of the debt than the actual individual households who are struggling. And to come in at a 16.4, to me, that's outrageous.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Do we know, too, in these comparisons, where we're comparing rates, but what about, are we comparing services? Like, do all the other cities have the extra services that we've negotiated with Calmet in our contract, like the large item pickups and the collections through the year, those type of things? Do we know that information?
Yes. I, I can't speak specifically for all the cities, but I do know that, generally speaking, the services in other cities are fairly similar to the service that we have here through Calmet. They do provide for bulky item pickup. They provide for other things like, you know, events, and residents can call in if they have, you know, an unusual amount of waste that they need picked up on a, you know, week-to-week basis. So these kinds of other things are included.
So we are kind of looking at it on apples-to-apples basis then, right, you would say?
For the most part, I would say. It's, it's pretty close. Of course, you know, each contract's a little bit different from each other, from city to city, but for the most part, we get a very similar service as compared to other cities.
And then, I was wondering, I don't know if Mr. Kalpikoff needs to answer this, or if staff has the answer, but the increase in reading the report had a lot to do with the tipping fee increases and the recycling issue. And I know when I was serving on the sanitation committee, they had told us that we needed to look forward to rate hikes because of China declining the recyclables now, and that it was going to be much harder for justice. Does that have something to do with the rate increase coming about?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Kalpikoff answer that. But, but that, in general, yes, that, that is part of it, tipping fees, their, their costs for, for having to deal with, how to deal with recyclables. That's part of it. But, but again, you know, looking at the increase that they had asked for, our goal was to try to minimize that amount on our residents. And, you know, we were able to negotiate- And, you know, we were able to negotiate a slightly higher amount with, with Calmet on the commercial side that helped to offset some of the costs. But our goal is always to try to keep our residential rates as low as possible.
And I think our residents are very content with the quality of service that Calmet provides. I don't think, in all the years that I've served on the council, that I've ever had a constituent come before the council and say something negative about the service. So I think our residents are pleased. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Chan or Mr. Kalpikoff?
If you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I'd just like Mr. Kalpikoff to...
Mr. Kalpikoff, would you be so kind to come to the podium, please?
If you could tell us if the increase has to do, I know that they really pushed it at sanitation to expect those because of the recycling issue. Does it have a lot to do with that?
Madam Mayor, Council?
Bill, if you can hit the...
Hit the button, Bill.
There you go.
Okay, good to go now. Yeah, we've been getting some increases, and, and it's kind of turning us into a nonprofit organization, to be quite honest. This, this past year, just the residential tipping fee went up 10%, so $5 a ton. That annual cost is about $80,000 for us, just for the $5 increase. So it equates to about $9 per year per resident, or maybe just under 90 cents. And we're only capturing 32 cents. Recyclables, we used to get paid $15 to $20 a ton. Right now, we're paying $33 a ton to the county sanitation, and that's because of the China swerve. The material that they use to recycle, they're not doing it anymore. Your rigid plastics, your plastic bags, even containers that have contamination in them, they're, they're just treated as trash, and we're, we're, with the disposal cost falls on our shoulders. You know, we're trying to do everything we can. We've, I think we probably give one of the best services around to the residents in LA County. That's just how we operate. We don't have any complaints. The rates are in check. You know, we, we offer, we do, we pay for half the street sweeping, which is about $104,000. We capture all the street sweeping debris, which is about $150,000 a year that comes out of our pocket, plus the franchise fees, Navy fees. None of these comparisons show what franchise fees the other cities are being paid either. So that's kind of an unknown factor that's in there. We started with, we're asked to do the cleanups, which we did last year with no compensation. We did it again this year in January with no compensation, and now we're asked to do a second one. But we're doing it because we believe in the city. I think it keeps a lot of the trash out of the alleyways, out of the people's neighbors' front yards. We offer 52 times a year bulky items. All the residents have to do is call us, and our truck is there. So I mean, our, our contract with the city, there's a lot of things that other cities don't have that we do, and we do for free, just part of our, our normal rates. So I mean, that's, if that answers most of the questions, I will try to answer one.
Don't you have to, Arby's and stuff like that now, like you have to transfer everything over to natural gas?
It's all natural gas. We have our own CNG fuel station, and all the trucks, all the equipment that runs in the city is all burned clean natural gas, natural energy.
That's expensive.
Yeah.
With all due respect, I know you have the tipping fees, but so do all the other agencies, too. And I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're getting the, a fair, a fair deal here in Paramount, when our medium, our pay is a lot, our, you know, income level is a lot less than, if you compare us to Cerritos, who's paying $17.60, and we're just about at $19. And then my other comment is, you are getting paid. You have a contract, and they just said apples-to-apples. Other contractors do the same thing for these pickups. So you are getting paid. We would never, a city like Paramount would never ask somebody to do something for free that other cities and companies are getting paid for. So you are getting paid for it. Nobody, and I don't want you to think that I'm saying that your service is less than. It's not. I'm very happy with your service. And just because people are content with your service doesn't mean that they want to pay above and beyond. And since we had the commentary that she, the mayor's never had any complaints, I'm bringing it up because I just received a phone call about how expensive Paramount housing is, and then also how expensive our trash is. So since you gave your commentary, I just think I needed to follow up with that. But I thank you for the job that you do. I'm not saying that you don't do a good job. What I'm saying is, I want to make sure that we're not overpaying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. What's your pleasure?
Oh, I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes, but I'd like to see if we can get a consensus to go out elsewhere, just to make sure we're getting a fair deal. I mean, it's about transparency and the best, the best service and price for the community. But like, yes.
I have, just to piggyback on that, I have no problem with, you know, some inquiries being made. I would say, though, that it appeared that the largest difference appeared to be in the city that was balancing the difference on the backs of the business community. And I know that a lot of residents here in Paramount own businesses and live here, too. So you're going to catch it one way or the other, and I think it's fairly distributed now. And that seems to be where they made the difference, up in the residential area. So I wouldn't be for that. I would only be when it's equitable to both and not balancing the, the budget on the businesses' backs.
Madam Mayor, if I may to also add, in regards to the contract, we are in the middle of a multi-year contract. When the first contract, well, not the first one, but the amended and restated agreement with Calmet was approved, it was approved for a 10-year period.
Right.
And I believe we are in the fifth or sixth year of a 10-year agreement. So escape clauses, I'm sure there are some within the contract, but my guess is that it would have to be for egregious, you know, things that Calmet is doing.
That's good to know.
And if they're, if they are providing good service, that, that may not be a cause to escape out of the contract and, and go out to bid again. So just to know.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item 15, receive and file update on the housing element compliance status, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. You know, you've probably heard a lot of press coverage lately surrounding Governor Newsom's push to solve the housing crisis that California is in. One of those efforts involves identifying and working with cities who do not have an approved housing element. We are very close to having an approved housing element and hope to have this before you for approval in the next few months. But before we bring you the housing element for approval, we wanted to share with you some preliminary details of our housing element, and also the times scheduled that we're on to get it approved. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Chan, our Assistant City Manager, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Yes, thank you again, John, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you know, in February, during his State of the State address, Governor Gavin Newsom restated that addressing the housing crisis in California is one of his major priorities. He also mentioned that 45 cities do not have a housing element in compliance with state housing policies, including Paramount. And just to refresh your memory, the housing element is one portion of the city's general plan that sets out how the city will accommodate a certain number of housing units as specified by our regional planning agency, which for us is the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. The city's current requirement set by SCAG is 1,000 additional housing units. Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that this housing has to be built, but rather, the city has to provide the proper zoning to allow for the possibility of such housing to be built. Also, as you know, noncompliance with the state's policy could lead to the city being ineligible for important state funding like SB 1, which provides money that's crucial for our road maintenance and improvement projects. Over the last year, staff has been diligently working to complete items needed for our housing element to comply with the state. You may remember, staff brought the adoption of an emergency shelter ordinance and changes to the municipal code to allow for accessory dwelling units and transitional housing for your approval. The final item to be completed for state compliance is an amendment to our Clearwater East specific plan to allow for 1,000 housing units that, again, is required by SCAG. The Clearwater East specific plan is the planning document that establishes the specific types of uses to be allowed in this geographic area over the long term. Currently, this specific plan does not include housing, and therefore, it needs to be amended to make housing an allowable use and to allow for the 1,000 additional units. So this is an aerial showing the Clearwater East specific plan area. As you can see, it's bounded by Rosecrans Avenue to the north, Somerset Boulevard to the south, Paramount Boulevard to the east, and the railroad tracks on the west. To complete this last item and to achieve housing element compliance, two actions have to be taken by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. First, the vision plan that's related to the West Santa Ana Branch Light Rail Project Station Area Development within the Clearwater East specific plant area will go to the Planning Commission this month, and then to the City Council in April for your consideration. Second, an amendment to the Clearwater East specific plan to allow housing as a new use will have to be approved by the Planning Commission in April, and then by the City Council in May. Upon adoption, the city's housing element will be in compliance with state law, and the city can then come off of the governor, governor's list. And just as a side note, cities on the governor's list were invited to meet with him to learn more about his housing goals and to discuss how the state could help them comply. We weren't able to attend the first meeting held in Long Beach, but I was able to represent the city at the second meeting in the governor's office in Sacramento last week. It was a good meeting, and the governor and his staff reinforced their message about the importance of providing more housing to help further drive California's economy forward. The governor also wanted to hear about the nuances of each of our cities and some of the impediments that we have for building new housing. I told the governor that while Paramount absolutely wants to comply with the state's housing policies, providing additional housing is challenging for us in our densely populated community. The Clearwater East area provides an opportunity for us now, but future housing requirements will be difficult for us to meet as we have very limited space for, for development. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Yeah, I have one question. It seems to me, quite a number of years ago, there was an ordinance limiting the number of units that could be put on one acre, I believe, if I remember correctly. Is that, does that come into play with this now, or does that kind of go by the wayside?
No, it, it does come into play. That was a, a measure that was approved by Paramount voters, limiting our density to 22 units per acre. That's still in place. However, with the Clearwater East area, specific plant area, we are able to meet the state's requirement for housing with that limitation in place. So should any developer at the Clearwater East area, specific, specific plant area or in other parts of town want to go beyond that, that would have to be something that the, the residents would have to approve again.
Any other questions?
Please, Steven, file the housing element update.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item number 16, community showcase video program. May I have a staff report, please?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. We were recently approached by the National League of Cities about a new promotional video program that they offer to their member cities. The league's consultant will produce these videos actually at no cost. As this program is in line with the City Council's desire to positively promote our community to residents and visitors, we decided to take them up on the offer. So here's Kevin to give us some more details about the program, and also to share with you some other cities' videos that have been produced for this exact same purpose. That'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you again, John, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned in my report, the city was approached by a company named CGI Communications that's affiliated and endorsed by the National League of Cities. CGI produces free promotional videos for cities to help provide information for things such as potential new residents, to attract new businesses, to highlight the quality of life and community amenities, and to bring attention to any other feature the cities, that cities have to offer. CGI videos, as you'll see, are very attractive and professionally made, and this program seems almost too good to be true. They're able to produce these videos at no cost to us by working in partnership with us to solicit local business sponsorships. Businesses that choose to participate are then featured in each of the videos, and as you see here on the screen, this is the link to the city of Idaho Falls, and as you can see, a number of their local businesses are featured here. We recently reached an agreement with CGI to produce up to six videos for the city, and again, at no cost. Once these videos are completed, the city will retain ownership of the videos, and we will have the final editing rights. The videos will take about, about two to three months to, to make, and we expect these videos to be available to the public sometime in the summer. So with that, I wanted to show you an example of a CGI video, so that you can see the type of quality that we can expect from these videos, and also to show you, again, how the advertisement works for the local businesses that participate. So with that...
There's nothing like...
Actually, if you, hold on one second, Jonathan, if you could go back, and maybe show one of the, one of the advertisements, if you can go to maybe RE/MAX.
There's nothing like finding the perfect place to call your own. At RE/MAX prestige, we're dedicated to helping you find your dream home.
Working with buyers and sellers through...
That was it. Thanks, Jonathan. So that's just an example of how CGI is able to produce these videos for free. Each of the sponsors would have a, a chance to produce a video and then have it shown as part of the city's videos. So it's a nice business model, and we get free videos. So with that, I'll ask Jonathan if you go ahead and click on the welcome video for the city of Idaho Falls.
It's full of limitless possibilities. But it all started about 150 years ago, when an entrepreneur built a bridge across a river. And things have been interesting ever since. We have people who come here because they need medical care. We have people from a three-state region who come here because they want good shopping. We have people who come here from a three or four-state region because of the entertainment. There are so many things I love about Idaho Falls, but one of my favorite things is that Idaho Falls is a city of leaders. We lead the way when it comes to innovation. We lead the way when it comes to civic involvement. We lead the way when it comes to doing all the things that make a community very special.
The infrastructure is key. If businesses want to develop or grow in the city of Idaho Falls, they need to make sure the infrastructure works. So we have our own fiber optics. We have our own water, sewer, sanitation. Many cities have to hire this out. We are totally self-sufficient in this regard.
If I had to use a single word to describe Idaho Falls and living here, I would say it's unexpected. The amount of innovation, science, and technology, the entrepreneurship that happens in this part of the state, and especially around Idaho Falls, is so exciting. The Idaho National Lab and other businesses related really bring in such a caliber of people and jobs and positions that you wouldn't think you would find those kinds of jobs and opportunities and businesses in a community of this size.
So Idaho Falls is the type of place where, if you're stuck on the side of the road, it's not if someone's going to stop and help you, it is how many people are going to stop and help you. You're hard-pressed to go down around the Greenbelt and not have someone smile and wave at you, and hear kids laughing and playing on the bridges. It's a great place to live and raise your kids and your family. It's a safe place to live.
I love Idaho Falls because we have a historic downtown that I think a lot of people would be surprised to find. Local merchants, coffee houses, local bars, we even have a pub. All sorts of these unique experiences can be found downtown.
I love Idaho Falls because it's a safe place to live and work, and it's a, a simple life. It is full of people that care about each other, and will give you the shirt off their back if they need to. That's something you can't take lightly, and it's not something I think that you see in other places in the country. That's something you can't take lightly, and it's not something I think that you see in other places in the country.
So again, that's just an example of, um, videos that are produced. And as you can see there on the, uh, left side of the video screen, um, those are the type of videos that Idaho Falls chose to create, um, as part of this program. So you can see, um, business success, home in, home in real estate. Um, you know, we, we, um, are, are thinking through some ideas, and of course, if you have any input, let us know.
The, um, the company states it's going to take three months to...
Yeah, we, we just, um, we just initiated, um, well, we just had a call with, um, the company today to, to start throwing around some ideas. Um, and we're going to start into the production process, I guess you call it, um, over the next month, over the next month or so.
I think it's wonderful.
What kind of business are you going to solicit to, uh, pay for this? Everybody?
You know, um, it's, it's really open. But, uh, again, like I said, um, CGI, they will work with us to reach out to, to businesses so that it doesn't appear to be like a cold call. Um, the, you know, the solicitation will be coming from CGI, but with us as a partner.
That's a great way to sell the city. Great deal.
But they're going to provide the manpower, then CGI is going to be the sales force, and it's just, and it's endorsed by the city?
Correct.
And then the topics that, um, are going to be part of the video, we get to decide which topics we want them to cover?
Yeah, we have complete control.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay.
Making motion, receiving file, this report.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item seventeen, proposed expansion of Paramount High School student recognition program. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, you may recall, um, our recognition of the top twenty-five Paramount High students last year on Alondra Boulevard was a huge hit. Uh, we got a lot of good feedback. There's one that just popped up on the screen, one of the banners. It'll be on your screen momentarily here. Um, as a result, we've come up with a similar way to promote, to promote, excuse me, a different group of students. And here's our, uh, Community Services and Recreation Director, Dave Johnson, to handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, as John said, we're going to be proposing a expansion of our current recognition program for Paramount High School students. Um, existing programs that the council has authorized over the years, we do recognize the top ten students and grade levels nine through eleven. Uh, these are students that used to come to the Safe and Smart Fair, but now they come to the Heritage Festival to get recognized by the council, uh, in front of a very large crowd, which is nice. Um, our Paramount Education Partnership scholarships, uh, those, uh, winners are also brought before City Council at our May Education Month meeting. Um, and then the last program that the council authorized is our top twenty-five, uh, Paramount High School seniors. They're the top academic students in the graduating class. Uh, those students are the ones that you see on the right-hand side there. They get their banners on, they're on Alondra Boulevard between Paramount Boulevard and Downey Avenue. Uh, they also come to council, they get a miniature recu- miniature version of their banner to keep, uh, and they also come to the May meeting where we recognize it as Education Month. Um, now, if you notice, all these all have an academic focus to them. Um, and that's obviously important because these are outstanding students. Uh, but there, we believe there's a miss segment, a couple miss segments of our, our graduating students that we'd like to recognize. Um, so the first group is our student community volunteers. So the, in these top twenty-five, you won't necessarily, I mean, find the ones who are our top community volunteers. Uh, so we, we, these are kids that provide an enormous number of hours helping service clubs, helping the city, helping various organizations in town, and they're very community-minded. So we'd like to identify those students because they generally do not show up, show up in the top twenty-five. Uh, then the last group is what the district refers to as momentum students. Uh, there are students who, in those first couple years of high school, kind of don't find their way correctly uh, because of economic circumstances, personal circumstances, or just whatever it might be. But in those last two years, they actually, you know, gain their feet, they start figuring it out, and they begin... They're, those, those are the kids that are gaining the momentum, they've found their way, and they find a way to get themselves accessible to college. Um, so what we're proposing to do is that we would turn to the, the district and find, uh, identify the top five Paramount High School volunteers each year. Uh, they would receive a banner. Um, and then the top five momentum students, the district would identify as students that, again, have really recovered and have really excelled those last couple years in high school and found their way to be eligible for college. Uh, so what we're presenting tonight is, um, we would have those top, those new ten banners, we would present them, um, to, at the City Council meeting in May, uh, and then we'd also hang their banners at the Civic Center parking lot here as opposed to Alondra Boulevard. Uh, the cost of this program is an additional two thousand dollars. The council has currently authorized four thousand dollars for the top twenty-five, uh, students. This would be additional two thousand dollars for the additional ten banners. Uh, there is addition, there is, uh, funding in our current year budget, in the community promotion budget. There's a miscellaneous category, uh, there's two thousand dollars remaining in that budget, and we're requesting that we allocate those funds for these banners. And that, we're recommending the council approve the two thousand dollars in community promotion funds for this expanded program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for David?
I have a couple, Madam Mayor. So one of them, I think you answered in your presentation, so that it's not going to be part of the Boulevard of Scholars. You're going to put these ten in the Civic Center, you said?
That's correct. We, we didn't want them to blend into the top twenty-five Boulevard of Scholars, so they will be here at the Civic Center.
Okay, but you're going to do it at the same time during Education Month?
That's correct.
Yeah. Are those banners up right now on the Boulevard for more than a month?
Uh, they go approximately, they'll go up in May, and they'll come down towards the end of summer.
And, um, for the volunteer, uh, top volunteers, is the criteria going to be the number of hours that they volunteer? And are you getting that from where? Where are you going to glean all this?
Paramount High School still tracks that, um, and we would get that number from them.
Um, okay, that's what I had. Thank you.
I have a question on the momentum. Um, you said the last couple years, a student can have done good, but I don't know. What, I, like, what could they have done that was not so good before, and now they're doing good? Because my only concern on that would be you're recognizing somebody who didn't do as good, and then they did good the last two years, but when you have students who are working their butts off all year, all four years, eight years, but they're just struggling to get by, um, and they, but they've tried really hard and they've done good. I just don't see, I mean, what kind of momentum are you talking about? Like, what did these other ones do that was bad, and now they're doing good? It just seems like you're rewarding that behavior. So what are you talking about?
Well, we're not trying to reward behavior. We're, we're trying to reward resiliency, the fact that a lot of these students that they can, that I've talked to the district about, it's, they've gone through a personal tragedy in their life, uh, they struggled. Uh, and, and, you know, one of the statements, I think, was Dr. Stark made to me once, that it's, it's amazing that these kids are even still in school. They've gone through so much early part of their life, and then somehow, some way, they gained their foot, their, their feet and started to figure it out and did really well their junior and senior year and made themselves college-eligible over all kinds of circumstances.
So it was like more of a hardship that they've gone through? Okay. That's good.
I think anytime that we can encourage students and support them, I'm totally in favor. So the two thousand dollars, I'm totally comfortable with. Um, any other questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, are there any comments or committee reports from councilmembers?
Um, Madam Mayor, I would just like to report that I serve on the SEACCA, um, uh, board and that we have hired a new, um, uh, executive director, which is Denise Woodside. Uh, we went through a recruitment process, but this is a promotion from within, so she will be taking Sally Hazard's place.
Any other comments?
I've just got one thing to say. BK is not in the audience anymore, but, uh, I just found out yesterday that BK's son has Lou Gehrig disease and, uh, is in bad shape. And, uh, I think he needs prayers for his family and everybody, so that's just something we could all look forward to.
Definitely keep him in our prayers.
And I just want to, um, give our thoughts and condolences to the family and friends of the, um, individual who was, um, killed to the rear, uh, Bank of America. Um, so our condolences goes out to their family. And then on a lighter note, I mentioned to John that I was approached to see if we could do a, um, a Hall of Fame, a Paramount Hall of Fame, similar to what Lakewood, the city of Lakewood does, and, um, I'm looking forward to his feedback so that we can continue to, um, recognize the great things people in our city have done.
I, uh, Mr.?
No, I don't have anything.
I attended, I attended our Paranormal Keepers. I attended our, um, first Friday Market on Friday evening. And my sister and I got there at five fifteen, and there were so many residents in attendance, and it was so nice. And then we even bought dinner. We bought ribs and chicken and brisket from Smoke Joey's, and it was delicious. And, um, it was so nice to see a lot of our, um, constituents come out. So I look forward to attending again in April, so...
I concur. It was really nice, Dave. Came out really good.
Thank you, David. It was a success. It was great. Yes.
Comment from staff? On that note, I also wanted to give, have, give an opportunity for David to, um, give a little update on how the, our first one went. Again, this is something brand-new that we were going to try, and we were hoping for the best. And I was there, too, and it was pretty amazing, the quality of vendors and the amount of people that were there. So, uh, Dave, if you want to give us an update?
Yeah, actually, so we contacted the market operator today. Uh, he's the one that brought all those vendors out, uh, just to get a status on how the vendors themselves felt. Uh, so for our first market, uh, his vendors were incredibly surprised.
Yay.
One, they were thrilled with how, how tight of a community we are, uh, that how much foot traffic came out, how much involvement there was from the community in, in the event. Uh, so they were thrilled. So almost everybody, every vendor actually met or exceeded their sales goals. There was only one food vendor that, uh, didn't do so well, and that's fine, that's going to happen. But to only have one on the very first market was pretty impressive. So the market vendor's thrilled, his, his vendors are happy. Uh, so I think we have a winner here. Um, I mean, just on, on a funny note, Marlene Ramirez, she was the one, the staff member from Recreation who was running the event. Uh, she came across so many high school friends. Uh, so one of the vendors, actually, the one selling the bows, that's an old high school friend. She made all kinds of new connections, and that's kind of what we're hoping to see. And this is, it brings the community out, we make new friends, we meet old friends. Um, and on another side note, that, you know, we had some concern about the other, the brick and mortar businesses around this market and how they might react. Uh, we had some pretty good evidence that actually the, the, the flow of traffic in this area actually brought a lot of vendors or a lot of people into these other brick and mortar stores. The, the gentleman runs the Hawaiian Grill across the street. He said, "Are you guys doing this every week? Because this is awesome." Uh, because he had a great night on business. So this is, looks like it's going to be a really positive thing. Uh, the Northgate Market Manager came out. Um, he's, he's like, "I, I need to join this," so Northgate's going to come on board. Uh, we're probably going to see Alondra Hot Wings come on board. Uh, so, yeah, we're really, really happy with how it came out.
That's great.
And, and, um, I didn't stay long enough to hear the entertainment, the music. How was that?
Oh, it was good. Again, they started off with, uh, they, they, we had, we didn't have live music this time. Again, the goal is eventually get to live music. He had a DJ. But we had Danley's, uh, Paramount Dance Company come out. Uh, and again, they're always, the girls are always beautiful, they're always real talented. And again, his goal is to, obviously, each, each week mix, or each month, mix that up and get new, uh, artists to come out and perform. Um, so, yeah, it's an opportunity. And again, it's, there's a lot of groups in town that have, uh, performance abilities, and so we're going to be able to tap into all those groups, and they get a chance to perform on a, a stage with a lot of residents watching them.
Thank you so much, David. Thank you. Okay, um, at this time, um, well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We'll be going into closed session, evaluation of public employee, city manager, um, code section five four nine five seven. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to go into our successor agency meeting. Uh, may I have roll call of councilmembers, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. Um, may I have, um, a consent calendar approval, please?
Move it.
Second.
No objections to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Here. Or, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I approved it. I adjourned this meeting, um, to April second, two thousand nineteen. It's going to closed session.